This is short notice, so be kind. Did you hear about the red and blue ships that collided? All the sailors were marooned.
All right, can you guys hear me back here? They are officially in the open, so we should be starting in about a minute. Okay, we're in the scroll, stand by for 30 seconds. Thirty seconds. Fifteen seconds. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five.
Okay, there we are. Okay, we are live, and welcome to the, this is officially called a special meeting, because we usually meet, as you all know, at nine o'clock on Wednesdays. But due to some travel schedules, as well as some requirements in the budget process, and a few items that we have, we, and out of respect to the Wichita City Council, who has their meetings on Tuesday morning, we chose to have this special meeting for the week. It's today, Tuesday, July 11th, here at one o'clock. So thank you all for joining. Apparently, Comms Department must have got the communication out, because we have a half-full audience here, so. Anyway, with that, we will call to order the special meeting of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners. Madam Clerk.
Invocation to be led by a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Beatty.
Present.
Commissioner Howe.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present.
Next item, please.
County announcements.
County announcements.
Hello, everyone. I'm Stephanie Birmingham with Strategic Communications. Our Sedgwick County Treasurer's Office has some big news this week. Two events coming up, and we have the Treasurer, Brandy Bailey, here to tell us all about it.
Good afternoon, Brandy. Welcome to the meeting.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you. Brandy Bailey, your county treasurer. Like Stephanie said, we have two big events going this week. Kind of exciting, but having it all in one week, so we've been really busy. The first is, we are opening a satellite office in Park City location. When I first came on, one of the big things I heard was, people wanted to have their tag offices a little bit closer. We closed, the prior treasurer closed several tag locations, so we're trying to figure out, how do we get back into the community and do it where we can afford to do it? So I've worked with Park City, and this is going to be our pilot project. We are going to open a satellite location, and it actually opens tomorrow at eight o'clock. And it's located at the Park City Admin Building, so our office will be right inside their admin building. And that's located at 1941 East 61st Street North, there in Park City. The office hours will be from eight to noon, and then they'll close from noon to one for lunch, and then we'll open back up from one till four. This will do, it'll be a full-service location. We'll do tag work, we'll do tax work, really anything that you can do at any of the Treasurer's Office, we can do it there, in their admin building. And we're going to be open twice a month. We'll be opening on Wednesday, on the second and third Wednesday of each month. And like I said, tomorrow is our first day to do it. We are doing it by appointment only, and tomorrow, I looked right before we came here, we only have three spots available for tomorrow. And then our next day will be July 19th, and that has multiple spots available. So pretty exciting. Like I said, this is my pilot project, to see how it works, how, and the feedback we get from people, and hopefully, we'll go into other locations, once we see the success of this. And then second, I have been working with, in partnership with the State Treasurer, Stephen Johnson, and we are doing an unclaimed property event in our Douglas Tag Office on Thursday, July 13th, from 10 to 1. Stephen and I talked a few months ago at a conference, and there is over $50 million in Sedgwick County unclaimed money sitting at the state's office. So I, we're trying to figure out, how could we help get that money back out to our residents? And most people come to the Tag Office, or at least once a year, so we have lots of connections and contact with people, so how do we help them? So our offices, we've got TV scroll, we have three monitors scrolling with the names of everybody who has unclaimed property in Sedgwick County, just in hopes that maybe you see a family or friend's name up there, and you can notify them to go out there and check. We have a kiosk set up in the office, so they can just go back to the back kiosk and put their information in there, just pull up and see if they have anything. And so like I said, that's Thursday, July 13th, from 10 to 1, and the State Treasurer will be there with us at this event, and we're hoping to get some money returned back to citizens.
Very good, and that, the website to look at that is very easy to navigate around.
Yeah, they've just done an upgrade to their website, and yeah, it's very easy to do it. I actually went out and looked under Sedgwick County Treasurer, and we had several checks out there, and so I'm in the process of claiming those checks back for Sedgwick County, and the process to claim is very easy as well.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Brandy? I don't see any. Thanks again for taking the time to share this.
That's it for county announcements, unless you have a question for me?
Okay. Stephanie, I don't see any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, we did not have anybody sign up for the public agenda, and we did not receive any emails. Oh, we're not doing the emails anymore. That's right. So we did not have anybody sign up, so. Next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of May 24th, 2023.
Commissioners, you see on the agenda that we have five different minutes, May 24th, June 7th, June 14th, June 16th, and June 21st. If you had a chance to review them, are there any additions or corrections? I'd like to make a motion to, we put all these together. Any additions? Okay. No additions, corrections? I made the motion, and Commissioner Dennis, second it. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Proclamations. Item F, proclamation declaring pretrial, probation, and parole supervision week.
Okay, and Commissioner Beatty?
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to read this proclamation. Whereas community corrections is an essential part of the justice system, and community corrections professionals uphold the law with dignity while recognizing the right of the public to be safeguarded from criminal activity. And whereas, community corrections professionals are responsible for supervising adult and juvenile offenders in the community, and are trained professionals who provide services and referrals for offenders. And whereas, community corrections professionals work in partnership with community agencies and groups to promote prevention, intervention, and advocacy. And whereas, community corrections professionals provide services, support, and protection for victims, and advocate for community and restorative justice. And whereas, community corrections professionals are a true force for positive change in their communities. Now, therefore, it be resolved that Chairman Peter F. Meitzner and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim the week of July 16th through the 23rd, 2023, as pretrial, probation, and parole supervision week. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the proclamation as read.
Second. Okay. There's a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? I don't see any. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman, the proclamation is being accepted by our very own Steve Stonehouse.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Steve Stonehouse with the Sedgwick County Department of Corrections.
Good afternoon.
Thank you. Very appreciative of this proclamation and recognition. This is where I started my career, was in community supervision, so it's a spot that holds near and dear to my heart. Community corrections started in Kansas in 1978. In 1983, the first clients were sentenced to community corrections in Sedgwick County, 1988, for juvenile services. Today, we serve close to 2,000 individuals every day in our adult and juvenile services. So we're very grateful for the support the board and senior staff shows, have shown us throughout the years, and we thank you for this recognition. I brought some staff with us today. They're going to introduce themselves, tell us where they work, and how long they've been with the county.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, hello. My name is DePaul Brewer. I've worked for the Sedgwick County for 16 years. I've started off as a corrections officer about 2007, so I currently work with the adult population, doing domestic violence classes and prevention, so very grateful to be here, and thank you, guys.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners. I'm Nikki Helms. I've been with the county for seven years now. I currently, the whole time, have supervised juveniles on probation. And thank you all so much for recognizing us. We really appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Hello, my name is Estrella Montiel. I've been with the county for a year and three months, and I work with the Evening Reporting Center, where we hold groups for juveniles and young adults, in helping them for, like, either with anger issues, or what can they do to better the community.
Hi, my name is Jamie Dodd, and I've been with the county for 15 years. I started out at the Juvenile Intake and Assessment Center, and I was there for about 10 years, and then moved over to the Drug Court Team, supervising adults in October of 17. And we sure do appreciate your continued support to do the work that we do. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Sometimes we have Stevens in the group, sometimes we have comments. I just want to say thank you. The role you all play with our juveniles is incredibly important for today and for the future. Anybody else? Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to say, I got to experience a drug court graduation just a couple weeks ago. That was mind-blown. I was so impressed with what happened there, and to see those folks come through that program. I am very, very proud of your staff in Sedgwick County for having that program set up the way they do. It is amazing, and I hope that the other specialty courts follow that lead. It's been tremendous. But I also wanted to just say, I also appreciate the Evening Reporting Center. You mentioned that also. I know there's a graduation, I believe, on Thursday at 3:30, correct? I know some Commissioners are not going to be able to be there because they're out of town, but I do plan on attending that this Thursday, but I just want to say thank you again. You guys do amazing work, and I appreciate knowing that the juveniles in that, in this particular case, these juvenile folks need that help so much, and appreciate what you provide for them, so thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Me bet. Any other comments? I don't see any? Okay, thanks again. Appreciate it. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments. Item G, resolution appointing Sherilyn Hill to the Sedgwick County Second District Citizens' Advisory Board.
Okay, and for the audience, we do have a series of a lot of appointments. Sometimes we combine a couple if it's similar, so. But this is our county councillor, Justin Wagner's. It's his first time in the Fish Bowl here, on your new position, so welcome, and Justin, hand it over to you.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. Justin Wagner, County Councillor, here to present, first, the resolution appointing Sherilyn Hill to the Sedgwick County Second District Citizens Advisory Board, as recommended for appointment by Commissioner Lopez. This would fill the vacancy left by the resignation of Nicole Helms. The resolution's in order, and I would recommend that you adopt it.
Okay. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. Well, I wish Nikki would have stayed, because she just walked out. So Sherilyn, thank you so much for filling her position. I know you've done so much work in our community already, so it'll be really great to have your voice and that experience on this board to help us make it even better. So I hope, I don't know if you're coming to our meeting, or thing tonight, but I hope you are. Okay, fantastic. Well, thank you so much for being here and for your willingness to serve. And with that, Chairman, I will move that we adopt this resolution.
Okay, I'll second that. Any other comments, questions? I don't see any. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And here to swear.
Good morning, Commissioners. All right, please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Second District Citizens Advisory Board, so help me God.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Commissioner Lopez, thank you for your recommendation. It was an honor. Fellow Commissioners, thank you for your votes approving me. I can't wait to serve the community again in this way. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item H, resolution appointing Joe Courier to the Sedgwick County Grievance Board.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes, this resolution would appoint Joe Courier to the Sedgwick County Grievance Board in the alternate department head position. The grievance board's comprised of three members, and then three alternate positions. Joe is the Sedgwick County's IT and Infrastructure Director, so he would be able to, the resolution would have him replace a vacancy, because the term that Alora Forshi had been serving has expired. The resolution is in order, and the recommended action is to adopt it.
Okay. If there's not any other questions, I will make a motion to approve Joe Courier to the, to this commission. Motion and a second. No other comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And I see Joe is here, so he was sworn in.
All right, raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of Office of Sedgwick County Grievance Board, alternate division department head, so help me God.
I do.
Congratulations.
I appreciate the opportunity, Commissioners. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item I, resolution reappointing Janet Brumba to the Sedgwick County Mental Health Advisory Board.
Okay. Mr. Wagner.
Yes, Chairman, Justin Wagner, again, the, this resolution would reappoint Janet Brumba to the Mental Health Advisory Board, as recommended by Commissioner Jim Howell. As you all know, each of you have three appointments that you can recommend to this board. The resolution is in order, and the recommendation is to adopt it.
Okay, Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Chairman. Just wanted to say, she's, she has been faithfully serving, she attends, and she's very passionate about the topic, so she wants to continue, and I'm pleased to recommend her appointment this morning, so Mister, this afternoon. Mr. Chairman, to make a motion, we would adopt the proclamation to appoint Janet Brumba to the Mental Health Advisory Board.
I'll second that. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And is she here?
She's on here.
Okay, all right. Next item, please.
Item J, resolution appointing Benita Chaplin to the Sedgwick County Community Corrections Advisory Board.
Okay, Mr. Wagner.
Yes, Chairman, and if it's appropriate here, I believe you can take Items J and K together. These resolutions would be appointing Benita Chaplin and Samuel Steinkamp to the Sedgwick County Community Corrections Advisory Board. The, both of these appointments have been recommended by Stephen Stonehouse as the Director of Corrections, and they would fill two existing vacancies. The resolutions are in order, and I would recommend they be adopted.
Okay. Is there any questions? I don't see any, so I will make a motion that we approve Benita Chaplin and Samuel Steinkamp to this board. Motion and a second. Being no other comments, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye, and they both are here to be sworn in. Thank you.
All right, please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of Office of Sedgwick County Community Corrections Advisory Board, so help me God. Congratulations.
Very good.
I'd like to thank Stephen Stonehouse for recommending me, and also for the Commissioners for your vote. After 28 and a half years with the district court, and three and a half years at OJA, I guess I didn't get enough of public service, so I thought I would give it just one more gander at supporting my community. Thank you.
Oh, Benita, thank you very much. That's well said. Thank you. Sam, all right.
Thank you to Stephen and the board for this appointment. I appreciate the opportunity.
Okay. You'll do, you'll do fine, so. Okay. Congratulations again to both of you. Next item, please.
Item L, resolution reappointing Daniel Bateman to the Sedgwick County Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board.
Okay, Mr. Wagner.
Yes, Chairman, and again, on this, I would propose taking Items L and M together. Both are reappointments to the Sedgwick County Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board for Daniel Bateman and Joseph Hamilton. Both have been recommended for appointment by Stephen Stonehouse. The resolutions are in order, and I'd recommend that they be adopted.
Okay, are there any questions for, on these appointments? I don't see any. I will make a motion that we approve Daniel Bateman and Joseph Hamilton to the board. Motion and a second. Being no comments or questions, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye, and I see, I think Joseph is here, right? Good afternoon.
All right, please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of Office of Sedgwick County Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board, so help me God. Item? No comments. Thanks.
Okay, congratulations again.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item N, resolution appointing Craig Hubbard to the Wichita Sedgwick County Food and Farm Council.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes, Chairman, again, I would recommend that Items N and O be taken together here. They are both resolutions appointing Craig Hubbard and David Paul to the Wichita Sedgwick County Food and Farm Council, for the two BOs, Board of County Commissioners at-large positions. As you know, these are newly formed, it's a newly formed board, and so these would be new positions. The two resolutions are in order, and I'd recommend that you adopt them.
Okay, are there any questions about these two positions or people? I don't see any. I will make a motion to approve Craig Hubbard and David Paul to the at-large positions on this board.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions? Don't see any. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And before you swear, man, I just want to thank my fellow Commissioners that this is a new board, and we all kind of took an interest in what was this about, and we received a lot of input, and so thank you, Commissioners, for your attention and your support on these two positions. So, go ahead, Kelly.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Wichita, Sedgwick County Food and Farm Council, so help me God. I do. All right.
I'd like to thank you for this opportunity, and thanks for your patience, and looking forward to helping the food insecurity in the county and the city, and thank you once again, looking forward to it.
I'd like to second that. Thank you very much for your support and your vote of confidence, and I look forward to you serving. Thank you.
Okay. We look forward to hearing the report after this board gets going, and hopefully has a positive impact that we all hope for, so thank you. Okay. Any other comments? See any? Madam, next item, please.
Item P, resolution nominating Ebony Clemens Ajibuladi to be considered for appointment to the Wichita Airport Authority Advisory Board.
Okay. I'm sorry, yeah. Commissioner Beatty.
Yeah, Ebony's not here today, but she's incredibly active in our community in a lot of different roles. You see her at TKMC, at the Chamber, and I was thrilled, and I know that Jesse Romo, our Director of the Airport for the city, was also thrilled that Ebony be willing to serve in this role. So Chairman, I'd like to make a resolution nominating Ebony Clemens Ajibuladi to the appointment to the Wichita Airport Authority Advisory Board.
I'll second that, and that's a great appointment. Ebony is a very good asset for our community, and she'll do good on that board. So I'll second that. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Madam Clerk, did you want to pronounce that last name again?
No, thank you.
Next item, please.
New business. Item Q, disposition of property near 63rd Street South and Meridian.
Okay, Andrew Dills, welcome to the meeting. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Chairman. Sorry. Andrew Dills, Director of Facilities, here to present on the disposition of real property from the, leftover from the Meridian Improvement Project. Little bit of history here, in 2008, Sedgwick County had a grant-funded stormwater project called the Meridian Improvement Project, which extended from 47th Street South to 71st Street South along Meridian. The project required a drainage easement that cut through a parcel owned by a church. During easement negotiations with the church, it During easement negotiations with the church, it was determined that such a divide would be a large encumbrance, and the church had no use, had use for only one half of the split, allowing the county to purchase the other half. The acquisition of the property came at a total cost of $39,000. The grant that funded the project covered 80% with 20% coming from the county, or approximately $7,800 for this land acquisition. The current county appraisal on the property is $29,300. The red triangle here is the parcel that was owned by the church. You can see, almost split right down the middle here, there's a drainage ditch that's been installed, and this, this green line here is the parcel divide between the land that the county bought, which is here on the north side, and what remains for the church. A few months ago, Southern Star Pipeline approached the county requesting an easement on the north side of the county-owned parcel. This easement would provide access to a small structure the pipeline would build for injecting odorizer into the natural gas. Natural gas by itself is odorless and explosive. Deodorant is chemically injected into the gas to deliver a rotten egg smell, and this is the first line of defense against combustible gases. Accessing this future building is achievable through an existing easement from the south. However, Southern Star prefers an easement on the north. When facilities and public work staff reviewed the request for a second easement, it was determined that the parcel had no use for the foreseeable future and would be in the county's best interest to sell the property. This would free county resources devoted to maintaining that parcel that has set vacant since county ownership began in 2008. Evaluating the dynamic layout of this parcel with two sides bordering drainage easements and no street frontage, the best potential to turn this land into something more is to merge it to the property to the north. If Southern Star's easement were approved, it would further isolate the parcel by eliminating the last remaining accessible border. County staff contacted the property owner to the north and found no interest in purchasing this parcel. When discussing with Southern Star, an opportunity to sell the parcel to the pipeline company came to surface. A verbal offer to purchase the property for a dollar was initiated by Southern Star. However, with the county appraised value being $29,300, Southern Star increased their offer to $14,650, and then ultimately agreed to meet in the middle at $21,975 and split the closing, closing costs with the county. I recommend the sale of this property, and I'll stand for any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions on this? I don't see any. So, this is, I think, in your district? You want to say anything?
Sure, I can make the motion. Hold on, let me go back to my page real quick.
Yeah. Yeah, Item Q, we've got the...
Now I got my pages all mixed up.
Disposition.
Got it. Sorry about that. Thank you. No, I think this is a really good idea that we can sell this. I don't think we're going to get much use of it in any other way. So, this is, I think, the best outcome for this, but I will make the motion that we approve the agreement and authorize the chairman to sign this agreement, and the deed.
Okay. I'll second that. So, motion and a second. Any other questions? I don't see any. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item R, presentation of the county manager's 2024 recommended budget.
Good afternoon, Tom. We received these yesterday, and all of us were able to thoroughly read it between yesterday and this afternoon. But actually, this has been a, before you present, Tom, it's been a process that some of us have been through a lot, and there's been a lot of exchange of comments and questions, both public and maybe individual Commissioners might have had their own questions privately to the manager or finance. So, this is the manager's budget as proposed, and, and we're not, we're, it's a receive and file, right?
All 824 pages, that's right.
Is that 824? Okay. All right. Anyway, so, Tom, thanks for being here at the meeting.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioner, Tom Stoles, county manager, here to go over the very, at a high level, the 2024 recommended budget. You've heard me say every year that budgeting, in this recommended budget, ultimately your task of the adopted budget is the most important work that we do here at the county. It's, it's arduous and lengthy, and I'll go through a little bit of process. We'll talk about state of operations and some recommended adjustments, and then finally I'll get to the recommended budget. I'd like to recognize first the budget team, and, and Lorian and her staff are right behind me here. These are the analysts that have touchpoints all over this organization, every elected office, every department and division, have representatives on this particular team through their analysts. It's a, we have numerous meetings, countless meetings, as we go from February through May, and I'd just like to thank Lorian and her team, and of course Lindsay in Finance and her team for working us through this. The goals of this budget are similar to previous budgets. The, the number one goal of this particular budget is the continued stabilization of county staff by addressing compensation, work environment, supervisory training, and employee training. When we had the budget workshop with the Commission at Exploration Place back in February, this was one of the themes that we heard loud and clear, so that has become a goal for this budget. The, a second goal of this budget is to make some very strategic staffing additions, modifications, and in some cases deletions. That is a natural process going through budget. Operations change within departments, within the county. Sometimes you attrit or delete positions, sometimes you add. In this particular budget, through the workshop that we had in February, the Commission made it pretty loud and clear that we had to do something for the election office and for the appraiser, and you'll see some positions, we'll go through that later on in the presentation, to shore up those two entities. In total, you'll see 8.3 additions to staffing in this budget. We take all of those positions very seriously. We're trying not to grow government, we're trying to just meet expectations and obligations of operations, and so you'll see some strategic positions added, and we'll talk more about that in a little bit. From a capital improvements perspective, we, of course, have a number of road and bridge projects on tap that are reflected in this budget, and several million dollars of infrastructure and property improvement. This is important for our staff and the, and the citizens of Cedric County who we serve as clients. That's what our buildings look like, how clean they are, how updated they are, how easy they are to access and get in and out of. So, we have submitted over $6 million of CIP projects for facilities. And of course, the Commission made it clear that our continued commitment to mental health is important, so this budget will reflect a $1 million contingency, and we'll talk more about that in a bit as well. There's no mill levy increase in this. I had Lorian look up this morning. The last time there was a county mill increase was 2007, so this is 17 years in a row now with no mill levy increase in Cedric County. The process, and you're all familiar with this, but I'll just, for the, for the public and those watching, I'll go through it. The, these processes for budget actually start in the fall and winter of the year ahead of the budget process. Where we sit and we meet as department and division heads, and we're always looking at consolidations and ways we can do business better, more efficiently, more cleanly. And then it also offers a time for the department heads and division heads to tell us as management, and ultimately to the Commission, what their needs are. And we put forward what's called in the county system as a, as a decision package format, and we had over $29 million worth of decision packages submitted this year. My point being, there are needs in this organization that we have to address. All departments and elected offices have specific needs, and we have through the process since then throttled those back to some degree to where we can have a responsible budget going forward. In February of '23, we formally kick off the budget process. That is the workshop that we had this year at Exploration Place. We heard the messages, stabilize the workforce, take care of appraiser, take care of the elections office, and other kinds of desires from the Commission. With that information, staff and I went back, the budget team and I went back, and we formed, began to form the manager's budget. This is the staff budget. We then had a dress rehearsal with all department and division heads in April to prepare for the, the meetings with you in May, where those were public meetings, where we talked about their asks and allowed Commission to ask questions and, and comment on proposed budget. In May and June, we had some workshops to follow up on some of these topics, and then we had further discussions with you as Commissioners weekly as we developed this, this, this manager's budget. And then that brings us to today, which is the presentation of a recommended budget. Whenever I talk to citizens, I say it's the job of staff to bring the Commission a 95% to 98% completed budget, and now it's the Commission's role and responsibility over the next six weeks, after hearing public comment and discerning themselves what the final budget looks like, and that's what we'll adopt in, in August, I think August 23rd this year. The state of operations of the county have changed. What, what a wild four years, right? We went through pandemic, and actually, I feel like in 2023 and heading into a 2024 budget, we are finally back to what I would call a normal county business again, even to today where we've, no more emails for public comment. You come back in in person, you're welcome to come back in, just like it used to be before the pandemic. So, from a protocol and business perspective, I really feel like we're back to normal in the county, even though we know there's lingering effects within the community concerning the, the remnants of the pandemic. We feel this year that staffing is improving, and that's for a couple reasons. Number one, actions that this Commission took last year to shore up some compensation issues, and a commen, a continued commitment to staff and employees to address that issue. We're seeing some improvement in staffing, and though we still have some challenges in 911 corrections, detention, and with our facility maintenance workers. So, we've got work to do yet, but it seems to be getting better. Similarly, we, we're watching the economy. It's, it seemed like it's, I could let Lindsay talk on this, but it seems like it's better than last year. We're out of double-digit inflation at least. It is still somewhat volatile, though we, we feel like at least locally it's improving. And we still have supplying, supply chain issues. That's getting better as well. We're not waiting as long for things, but the costs of everything have gone up, as you well know, as homeowners, business owners, and dis-citizens, anywhere from 10% to 50%. We're seeing extreme cost increases, and that impacts all of our budget, from everything, from contractuals to commodities, every touchpoint in the budget, that has impact. As far as recommended adjustments, and there's three themes here I want to talk about, first being employee compensation, which the Commission has made a priority. As you recall, last year, we implemented seven additional pay plans to, to immediately tackle the departments where we had chronic and severe workforce shortages, and that has helped to some degree. This year, our HR organization led by Sheena partnered with Evergreen Consultation, and they did a study implementation for a general pay plan market adjustment for the 1,400 or so employees who are in general pay plan, and we're making a recommendation as part of this budget that that plan be adopted. And that's, there's a significant dollar value there as well. Other than that, across the board, we're recommending a 2% scale, pay scale adjustment for anyone that's in a step program. So, that's Sheriff EMS and Cedric County Fire District Number One, plus they'll get their, their step raises when, on their particular dates. With EMS and Fire, that's on January 1, and with the sheriffs, it's when that particular employee hits their anniversary date. For the rest of the employees, we're recommending a 3% pay adjustment for all other employee groups. In the work environment perspective, as I mentioned, we had 2024 Facility Capital Improvement Plan of 6.6 million, and that's to just maintain all of the, the buildings that the county runs, to make sure that our, that our clients, our citizens, when they come to those buildings, feel welcome, it's clean, it's safe, it's accessible. So, we continue to spend a significant amount of money on our facilities. And then, of course, as I mentioned previously, we've set aside the $1 million health, mental health contingency, because we know that as we go through 2024, this Commission will get hit with things that may or may not have been expected, and this gives you the flexibility as the elected board to make, to adopt programs or plans or fund positions, whatever you want to do with that particular contingency money, you have options to, to do that, or it's contingency, we don't have to spend it at all. So, there's options there for the Commission. We, I mentioned before the strategic position additions. We've, we're recommending in this budget, we add three FTEs to the election office, which gets the Commissioner on her way, pointed north to shoring up her, her staffing request. She asked for more. We tried to hit that in the middle to some degree, so we're recommending three. Similar with Mr. Clark in the Appraiser's Office, he's asking for more positions. We know he needs them. We're going to recommend in this budget that he receive two. Two positions for Cedric County Fire District One, one FTE for emergency communications in 911, and a consultant study that'll go along with that particular department. One FTE for Regional Forensic Science Center to help Dr. Stedman with her field investigations, and one FTE for EMS, plus a significant organizational change support for EMS to allow Chief Lannerman to migrate to a two-paramedic system versus the one-paramedic, one EMT model that was adopted back in 2018. So, that's a significant shift, and comes with a price tag, all to give better service, all of these positions to give better service to the community and the citizens that do business with those particular operations. In total, then, our recommended budget for Cedric County is north of $518 million. For the Fire District One, it's a little bit south of $28 million, for a total recommended budget of $546,209. Property tax are estimated to stay at $29.370 mills into this recommended budget, and a Fire District tax of $17.889 mills. Going for, oh, I'm sorry, one last slide here, just to kind of show citizens how their money is being allocated. Our biggest chunk goes to public safety, as you can see, if it's visible. 38% to, to public safety, almost $210 million. General government, which is a lot of, all of the elected offices, finance, HR, the first chunk of this budget book, it deals with general government. And then, public services, also referred to in the budget book as human services, services that directly go to people in need, represent, round out the top three. So, next steps in our, in our process, and I know there's some discussion that may happen from the bench on this yet, but we currently have scheduled our online public review of the budget at CedricCounty.org. That will come online today, so citizens can get in, and if you're a citizen and you want to tackle 824 pages, look at the executive summary at the very front end of the book. It gives you a nice snapshot and overview of how the county is spending your money. And then if there's something in that executive summary that interests you, then dive into the book. Unless you're like Lindsay, she'll read all 824 pages. But for citizens that really, to get the overview, just look at the front part of the book and, and, and go from there. We'll also have an online public forum that we'll turn on, and that's after, that's today too, right? Where citizens can get on and actually give comment, that the Commission, we will feed those comments to the Commission, so they're aware of what's being said, and as we go through this next six weeks of public discourse and, and debate and discussion, we can, we can modify and make changes. We actually have a public hearing. Our first public hearing is August 2 at 6:00 PM here, right? In this room. And then our second public hearing is the day of ratification on August 23, 9:00 AM in this room, and that is also our revenue-neutral rate hearing date. in this room, and that is also our revenue-neutral rate hearing date. Budget adoption tentatively planned, almost has to be done, August 23 at 9:00 a.m. for us to stay compliant with state law. And I think that is it. Any questions for me or Lorian? Lindsay's way in the back, but we can make her walk down here. Anything we could answer for today?
Well, Tom, you covered one thing that I was going to cover, but it's just worth repeating that if, for the public, you talked about the executive summary, and you get a chance to read it, and you're right, it is very thorough. I think it's well-written, whoever, my credit to whoever. Then it's got a few backup documents in it, and then you can, like I said, you can delve into the department that you want to if something tweaks you. But your first couple of pages, and then your executive summary is a, page one through eight, so it's not a lot of pages, and it's really good. So that'd be my comment. I know this is just our first one, and it's a kind of a receive and file as we get into the next month to August 23, so it's a month plus. So is there any questions at this point? Did anybody want to?
Yes, Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. And thanks, Tom, and thanks to all the staff throughout the entire county that's worked on this program. I also want to let everyone know that I will be having our county manager out to my Citizens' Advisory Board on Monday, the 24th of July, I believe it is, at 7:00 o'clock out at Goddard Service Center. So that's one more opportunity for the public to be able to put input into what's happening with our budget. I do just have one minor question, probably not minor. With the FTEs, I agree with all the FTEs. My only question that I have is that some of these, like the Appraiser's Office, 911, Regional Forensic Science Center, they're hurting now. What would it do to our budget if we implemented those in the 2023 budget and carried them forward? How much of an impact would that have so that they could start hiring those positions right now?
I'll take a stab at that, and Lindsay's way back in the corner, but she can come talk if she wants. There is compensation contingency in the 2023 budget, which would give flexibility to the commission, so if they would choose to fill these positions in current budget year, and then, of course, the budget would be existent moving forward in 2024 through this budget process to sustain that moving forward. So I would think, and we would be glad to do analysis on what that would exactly cost you, present it back to you, so after you ratify this budget, you could make that decision at that time, if that's what you choose to do.
Well, I'd just like us to consider it. I am not opposed to any of them, I just know that some of these offices are hurting today, and anything that we can do to help them, I think is very important. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and Commissioner Beatty?
Lorian, would you be able to clarify the contingency amount that's available in '23, and what that looks like? I think that's an interesting, it's an interesting thought, an interesting way of doing that, so I'm kind of curious what that might look like.
Lorian, are you going to tackle it?
Lorian Showalter, Area Budget Director. For 2024, we have $34.7 million budgeted in contingencies. We have a 2.5% employee contingency included, and then our usual operating reserve, BOCC, public safety, rainy day, a technology contingency, and the mental health contingency.
Just the piece of that, that's the compensation contingency, how much is that?
2.5%.
I think it's an interesting idea, because I agree with Commissioner Dennis, there's some urgent needs, and we have six months to go in a year. So it might be worth digging deeper to see if there's something that we can push through immediately. So I appreciate the recommendation.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also want to extend my appreciation to all the work that's been done, quite a publication to start looking at, and it's pretty well organized. And so I want to say thank you to Tom and all his staff that made that happen. We are required to have how many public hearings?
One.
We're required to have one?
Yes.
Okay. I guess my, I'll say, I've seen Gupson just before, that the one we call a second public hearing is really not, doesn't give us any opportunity to change anything, because it's too late. I mean, on the 23rd at 9:00 a.m. is the second public hearing, and we're going to be adopting the budget theoretically moments later. So it'd be pretty unlikely for us to actually, you know, take any public comment and actually react to that with some type of change to the budget. I do like the idea of having a second public hearing. I wish it was, and no offense to my colleague here, I appreciate his cab board. I know one commissioner, I think, last year had quite a few budget discussions at their cab board. We tried to avoid having staff have to be out in the evenings, so our cab board did not request that. But I wish there was a second public hearing, and I don't know if the cab boards want to do this jointly, or, again, that sounds kind of like a public hearing that's maybe downtown again, but I don't know if we dedicate a time to a second public hearing. To me, if each of the five cab boards does that independently, then it's an awful lot of work for staff, and I don't really want to do that either. So I'm willing to work with you all, but I would like to see a second public hearing that's more accessible to the entire county. Again, we can all go Commissioner Dennis's cab board, I suppose, but it may not be what he wants to see happen there. So can we somehow find a way to do a second public hearing that's not on the 23rd?
I think staff's ready for whatever the commission body wants to do as far as second public meeting. I think we're, we'll clearly be available for that.
Commissioner Lopez, did you want to respond to this, or?
No.
Okay, well, I will add that I have a, my cab this next week will have a review of the budget process, and Commissioner Dennis is doing the same. And I did notice that we've also, we're allowing every meeting between now and budget adoption, we're going to have a budget conversation as an item. So there will be, I think there will be plenty of opportunity for the public to attend between now and then on every Wednesday to be part of the public budget conversations. So personally, I don't think we need to have another meeting, that's just my feeling.
I guess my, thank you, Chairman. My other comment would be then there's quite a big discussion happening at a cab board, and I'm not sure all the commissioners are able to absorb the information that's being discussed at those other cab boards, unless there's minutes or audio or video available to the other commissioners. And so I guess I would ask if staff's going to be out there getting public comments on the budget, I'd like to know what's being said, how to get that data, but.
Okay. Well, ours takes minutes, I think everybody has minutes, but Commissioner Lopez, did you want to say something?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I would agree that, well, first I'll just say that my cab board next meeting will be talking about budget. That's August 8 at 6:00 o'clock at the Hayesville Public Library, so we'll be discussing that as well. But I also think it's really important just to mention that before, when meetings start every single week, there's an opportunity for public comment, and so anybody can come speak to us at any point about anything, including the budget. Doesn't have to be one of these specific meetings for someone to speak to us about anything budget. So I agree that what we're doing now is sufficient in my mind. I don't think there's anybody who would be unwilling to hear from constituents at any point in time, even if it's not within this meeting, but that's where I'm at on that topic. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know that the chairman has already mentioned that it is included in our agenda every single meeting between now and adoption of the budget. The chairman and I did have an opportunity to meet with the Fire Chief this morning, and we told him it's going to be held every meeting. Unfortunately, he'd have to sit through a two- or three-hour meeting in order to get to the fire portion each time. So one thing we did discuss is maybe holding a fire board meeting at the beginning of that, rather than at the end, just so that the Fire Chief and his staff doesn't have to sit here. So we'll leave that up to the manager to work that out with the Fire Chief on how that we run that, and the chairman runs the meeting, so he can pick it up at any point during the meeting that he'd like to do that. But again, every single meeting is going to be both on the regular agenda and the fire agenda from this point forward. So there's an awful lot of opportunity for public comment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Again, I know that discussion is more for commissioners to talk to each other and to staff. It's not necessarily intended to be a public hearing each time we have a discussion on the budget, each agenda from now till August 23. Is that the intent of that discussion on the agenda?
We experimented with this last year, we put this agenda item on. I think you're right, I think it's, the commission has a chance to raise questions of staff or have discussion with staff. I don't know that there would be a problem putting a public piece to that. I'm also thinking that as we go out to dab boards, we'll have staff record any budgetary question and share that with all commissioners, so they know what's being discussed at the individual dab boards. I don't think that would be too tedious. But how you manage that portion of the BOCC meeting where we're going to talk about budget, I think is up to the board. If you would want to allow citizens to come in and comment during that, or catch it during the initial public comment period, we can be flexible on however the board wants to handle that.
I just want to say, I'm trying to be generous, I'm trying to be thoughtful of our staff not to have to repeat at meetings all around the entire county. I think having a couple of public hearings would be wonderful. Our public hearing, some years has been very well attended, some years not, but we have spent sometimes hours and hours listening to public comment, and I think those have been very beneficial to everyone. If we're going to do cab boards, I guess I'll climb onboard and say, August the 4th at 4:00 p.m., I need to have staff out there presenting to my cab board then. I don't know that the purpose of it necessarily, other than simply saying that we're going to do this to every cab, I guess that's what we'll do. But I would really like to see us not, you know, tax our staff so hard to have to attend so many different meetings for the same purpose. But anyway, that's what we're going to do, I guess that's what we'll do. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments, as Commissioner Lopez?
I just have one question about the task force contingency. How much is in that, has any of it been, and I haven't looked through the books, I apologize on that piece of it, but is there any piece of that that's already been spent? Are there plans on what that's going to be going for from '23 and then into '24?
And you're referencing mental health?
The mental health part that came with the task force.
We have spent nothing of that.
Is there? One million in the contingency, for the record, from Lindsay, thank you. Is there any plan on what that's going to look like? Because I know that was in there from the year before, and I'm assuming that's rolling over to this coming budget? Is that what's happening with it, if it hasn't been spent?
I'm going to let Lindsay come up, but I'm kind of looking for Rusty too, on district comment. If he sees anything coming from the task force perspective, any expenses coming, so...
But I apologize, mental health came from a recommendation from the task force, and that's how I think that got spun up and started and created in the first place, so that's what I called it, task force, and not mental health contingency.
Yeah, while Rusty's coming up, I kind of was wondering if it was more of a, we don't know, there might be a joint effort for a expense on a consultant or so, I don't really...
Oh, for the RFP that we're putting out to the city?
Could be any, so you probably just pulled out a number to stick in there. I don't think you had anything specific yet, but Rusty?
Rusty, lead assistant county manager. As far as the mental health contingency, I think that was in part in response to task force, potential task force recommendations, but then I think it was also broader than that with the idea of the hospital coming online and those types of things. As far as the task force, I think while we haven't completed all the work that we intend to complete there, a big portion of that had to do with field response for mental health calls, and I think the city putting forth $3.25 of a million, and I think more recently updating that number to closer to a million in order to contract with Calm Care in order to provide that community mobile response. And then Calm Care is also, as my understanding, has received funding from the state related to the suicide crisis line that they're using to help put resource in 911 whenever Alora and her staff are able to get back into the public safety building and they have space for that person to come online. So right now, I don't see anything coming out of the task force that's really going to tap into that mental health money, unless something, right now, I don't foresee that unless something changes in the next couple or three months. And then I'll let Lindsay speak to more specifics.
Would there be any way to get maybe a dollar amount, and how much has been spent so far on the recommendations between city, state, and, I know that's a lot, but is that possible, just to see what that looks like?
We had a calculation on that, was that in '22 when we did the workshop? I think we can update that.
Okay, because I know with everything you just said would be in addition to, so I would appreciate, just having a better idea of where we're at with that. Thank you.
We could come up with a pretty close figure as to what's been spent between both county and then what cities contributed. We'll work on that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Howell?
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me ask you, because my question would be, are you wanting us to ask all our questions about the budget right now before we make a motion to receive and file? Are we going to have that more robust discussion when we get to that part of the agenda where it says discussion on the agenda?
You know, we talked about this. Generally, historically, the commission has received and filed today, and had a chance to digest this, give the public a little bit of a chance to digest it, and then dive into this in the ensuing weeks between now and budget. But however the commission wants to handle that, we'll roll with the flow.
Just to be clear, I do have some questions on the budget so far, so I want to make sure I don't miss my opportunity to talk about some of my questions when the appropriate time comes up.
Sure.
Thank you.
Well, I'll recommend, if there's no other questions, I'll recommend that we receive and file, and then during our budget discussion agenda, could be further questions. So make a motion that we receive and file the manager's recommended budget.
Second?
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Thanks again, Tom. Next item, please.
Item S, authorize the publication of the maximum property tax levy to fund the 2024 Sedgwick County budget and establish public budget hearings on August 2, 2023, and August 23, 2023.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. Lorian Showalter, Area Budget Director. The item before you is requests for authorization to publish the notice of public budget hearing, which also establishes the maximum budget and the maximum property tax levy for the 2024 budget. State law does require that the county publish the time and place of a budget hearing at least 10 days prior to that hearing. This notice must also include a summary of the proposed budget that includes the maximum proposed spending for a given year, the maximum property tax levy proposed to fund the budget at a fund level, and this day is often referred to as the last update, because after this point, the total budget for property tax funds and the maximum property tax levy cannot be increased without republishing the required notice and holding another public hearing. This notice will also publicize the intent to exceed the revenue-neutral rate of 26.949 mils in the recommended budget. This will authorize us to notify the county clerk and make publication in the county newspaper and on the county website on the August 23 hearing on exceeding this rate. The maximum proposed budget is $518,464,784 to be funded with a tax levy of $188,883.68 based on a mil levy rate of 29.370 mils. The first public hearing will be held Wednesday, August 2, at 6:00 p.m., and the final public hearing will be held Wednesday, August 23, at 9:00 a.m., with budget adoption also scheduled for August 23. I'll have you stand for any questions. If there are none, I recommend you authorize the publication.
Okay, Lorian, thanks for explaining. A reminder that this, even if we were only going to go a dollar over the 26.94 mils, we would have to have a motion to exceed that rate. So for the public, we can always, by the end of budget season, we can come down from there. This is just a vote to allow us, to allow the county in general to exceed that minimum rate, even if it's a tenth of a mil. It would have to be that. If we would vote to not exceed, then we would, it would require the finance and the whole, all the government agencies to look at, how do we get, my quick math was about two and a half mils less than what we're currently at. So any other comments or questions, I'd be glad to make a motion. And I don't see any, so I'm going to read the motion so it's precise. Go ahead.
Chairman, I did just want to supplement, and I looked to Lorian and Lindsay as well on this. I think any motion that you would have should also address the providing notice to exceed the revenue-neutral rate if you're following the recommended action on that as well. I don't believe...
It's in the motion.
It is in your motion language, okay. My apologies, Chairman, thank you.
That's okay. As I read the motion, so Justin, if I read the motion, just pay attention, or I can give you a copy of it, and you can see if I read it. Okay. So I will make a motion, and again, is there any other questions or comments?
Yes, Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am, I'm not comfortable with the numbers as it's ordered in the motion currently. I would like to see something a little bit less. I talked to Lindsay a little bit ago. I understand she does have a couple of other options prepared for us if we should ask for them, so I would like to ask for the proposed language, if we were to drop this by half a mil or quarter mil, and also 29.359. May we see those, please?
Yes.
And the reason I say 29.359 is because we had a resolution that has been rescinded, it's no longer in effect, but we did have a target mil levy of 29.359, which is historic for Sedgwick County, and for a number of years, we've used that as our base mil levy to build our budget until this year, which is, this year, we see an 11,000th of a mil increase, which is based on the technical adjustment by our county clerk. So we ended up with 29.370 versus 29.359, so an 11,000th mil increase from the county clerk as a consequence, I believe, of appraisals that were adjusted by the county appraiser after the... after the assessed value was provided to us in the early part of the budget process, so.
Two each, okay.
Thank you.
And correct me, did we do this last year? I thought we made it, do we, I think, do you recall, Jim, did we?
It was on budget adoption day last year.
It was, say what?
It was on budget adoption day.
On budget adoption day, we reduced it to the 29.359 last year.
That's when we changed it?
Yeah. And it sounded familiar when you were talking about it, and I thought, I think we did that, but I didn't. So we did it on adoption day?
Yes.
Okay.
Again, the, the value of having these numbers in front of us, it gives us a cap to work with. So, yeah, I don't, I don't have the places in the budget where I would recommend we necessarily make adjustments today. I have some suggestions. I'm not sure that you want to hear all those right this minute. The question is, you know, quarter of a mil is roughly, if I understand correctly, one mil is about 6.431 million dollars, and so quarter mil would be about, would be roughly?
It's a 1.6 million.
1.6 million, alright. So rather than have an increase of 15.119 million over last year's property tax collection, we'd be 1.6 million less than that.
Yes.
Right?
Correct.
I know that sounds like a challenge, and I like a challenge, so. I don't know if anybody else has any comments, but I would be, I'd probably be in favor of the, of the quarter mil reduction. It's not very much, but it's something. And again, I think that the, the value in doing this is it gives us a number to work with.
Okay, Commissioner Dennis?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it, and thanks to our finance department for putting together these two ideas with a quarter mil and a half mil reduction. I want to make it clear that I'm not opposed to any kind of a reduction in, in the mil levy rate to give money back to the, to the taxpayers. If only the county does this, it's a very, very minor change in what happens to the overall tax that any individual taxpayer pays. And I, I would like to actually defer the decision on this because as Commissioner Meitzner mentioned, we can do this on budget adoption day. All we are doing today is setting the maximum amount. But between now and then, I'd like to challenge every other finance organization, any taxing agency in the county, to do what we're going to do. And I think we probably will vote on adoption day to, to have a, a reduction, and a quarter mil is not out of line from what I feel comfortable with. But again, if only Sedgwick County does it, it's such a small impact that people will not notice that in their overall tax bill. So between now and then, I'd like the rest of the 125 taxing agencies that we have in Sedgwick County that are taxing our citizens to take a look at theirs and see if every one of those could do the same exact thing. That would make a significant impact because with the school districts, the cities, the townships, with the cemetery districts, with water districts, if every one of them did that, our taxpayers would actually see a change. So I, I think today is premature because I'd like to hold this open in order for us to challenge the other organizations to do the same thing when they adopt their budget. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. As a matter of fact, I've had some discussions as well with, with our clerks and others, and I mean, it's all public information, but I think most of the taxing agencies in our county, county, cities, townships, and obviously 10 school districts that touch our, our county. Anyway, all of them have received the benefit of assessed valuation growth. So they've all, and, and there's not an exact number, but it's roughly eight to nine percent revenue growth. And I, we don't, I don't want to run in their lane of traffic, and they all have their own budget process, but if they were similar to where early projections were five or six percent growth, and they actually received more than that, I think what Commissioner Dennis is, is hitting on something really good. It, it would make an impact, I think, as well to, to the state, to Topeka, as they're talking about trying to put a lid on the evaluation growth. We could, we are the largest city and second largest county. We could take a leadership role in challenging all of our entities to, to match whatever we think might be comfortable with some kind of a, of a mil levy reduction that would have a significant impact to the, to all the residents and the businesses that are getting whacked pretty good as well. So I, I tend to lean in agreement with, with David. You know, Commissioner Howell, we're kind of, in a way, we're all on the same page, but I think I'd like to, the course of the next month, we understand what we really think we could live with, and maybe how to formulate, and maybe even have some meetings with some key taxing agencies as, as elected officials to, to not tell them what to do, but to maybe help challenge them. So what else, does anybody have other comments about this?
Let me get another comment.
Go ahead.
So just as another way to put this in dollars, dollars people can understand, on a hundred thousand dollar home, if that's the assessed value in 2020, January 1st of 2023, which drives this budget, the tax dollar increase for that home, a hundred thousand dollar home, would be $27.03, or actually four cents, 23, $27.04. We're talking about not collecting $2.88 out of the $27.04. So $2.88 is, is how much we're not going to collect. We're still going to collect $24.15 over what they, we collected on that same home last year. I think we can do this, guys. I, I know that's, I, I understand the point of putting this off, but I think this also is important that we challenge ourselves, and the best time to challenge ourselves is early in the budget process. Had the assessed value come in at a different number, we would have built a budget on a different number. It just is the number that it is. So I don't, I don't see that there's a reason why we shouldn't, you know, select something different than what the appraiser handed to us. I'm also disturbed a little bit, again, by the fact that we're not using 29.359. That's, my calculations, that's about $71,000 difference between what the budget has, has been present, what's been presented to, to us today versus what I think it should have been, 71,000 difference. It's a very small number in light of the overall budget, but it is still $71,000. And to me, it's, it's an issue of principle. So I'm, I'm a little bit bothered by the motion as it's currently worded, and I would, maybe I won't get a second, but I'd make a motion that we would, I can read the entire motion. I hate to waste everyone's time. I'd like to make a motion, we would adopt the language that would, that would include the 25%, a .25 mil reduction language. You have that in front of you, and if there's a second, I'd be glad to read the, the motion in its entirety.
Okay, there's a, a motion, is anybody, is there a second? Commissioner Beatty?
Just a question for clarity, I, I just want to make sure that the public knows, and that what we are doing today is adopting the maximum capacity, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Not exceed, correct, so?
Correct.
We have intention for the next six weeks is to dig into this and flesh out exactly what we want to accomplish. And on a personal level, I won't vote for a budget that will increase mil levy. So we're setting a cap today, and then we have six weeks to work to, to get to a final number, correct?
Correct.
A final number that will likely be less than the 29.370 mils. So I, I just want to make sure that the public understands that this, this today is about setting the cap, and, but this is nowhere near finished and final, that we have work to do to, to lower or serve the interest of what it is that we want to accomplish in this budget. So I just want to make sure, I understood, want to make sure the public understands that we're setting a cap, that this is not the final budget.
Okay, and Mr. Wagner?
Yes, Chairman, I did want to say, if, if there's going to be a motion, it's going to be seconded, I think you need to read the motion of the record as well.
Okay, well, so far, there's not been a second, but if you want him to read the motion.
And, yeah, I didn't know.
I just want to describe it, it's intended to be the, the motion that we have in front of us for .25 mil levy reduction. If there's a second, I'd be glad to read the motion in its entirety.
Okay. Is there a second? And is there a second? I don't see one, so the motion fails, the lack of a second. Okay, we go back to the, well, we didn't make the original motion yet, but I'm prepared to make that motion unless there's other comments. Okay, then I will move that we authorize the publication of a notice of public hearing and intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate regarding the Sedgwick County 2024 budget. The publication shall include a total budget of 518,460, 518 million, thank you. It's just a matter of zeros, right? 518,464,784 dollars and an ad valorem property tax levy of 188,888,368 dollars, which is approximately equivalent to 29.370 mils based on the estimated assessment valuation and subject to technical adjustments.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Okay, Commissioner Howell?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say, I, I understand what you're doing, and I, and I see the logic of what you're doing. I think last year, at this point, I also, I also would have known for the same reason, but I, I, I don't want to be a weasel and say, you know, I'm, I'm the conservative option here, that's not true. I think everybody here has the same heart. I don't think anybody up here is saying that they, they, they get the conservative chip and nobody else is, is conservative. I think we all are trying to do the right thing. But, Mr. Chairman, I, I do feel like I am, I may need to vote no, not because I, I criticize any of the folks at this bench. I understand what's happening here, and I understand the goal of doing this after today. I hope that we can, in fact, do that, so I just wanted to make sure, I emphasize with you all, I appreciate you if you vote yes, but I'm not trying to, to be critical to you personally in any way, thank you.
Okay, any other comments? We did have a second. Okay, we had a motion and a second. No other comments, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
No.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioner, Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office, recommending approval of consent items T through double letter AE.
Okay, is there any questions on consent items T through AE? I don't see any, so I will make a motion to improve, to approve consent items T as in Tom through AE.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other questions? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Let's recess and go to the fire agenda, and then we'll come back right before the budget discussion. So if y'all have available, let's go to the, want to call a meeting to order of the First District Fire. Madam Clerk, please, next item, please.
Roll call, Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Beatty.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present, next item, please.
Agenda.
Anybody from the public? Nobody signed up to addresses, so next item, please.
Consider, consideration of minutes, item A, fire meeting minutes of June 21st, 2023. Commissioner Howell was absent from that.
Okay. Commissioners, you had a chance to review the minutes from the fire meeting of June 21st. Any questions, comments?
Comment.
Oh, yeah, comment, Mr. Howell?
Thank you, Chairman, I just wanted to explain, I did have to leave right before the fire agenda began for a funeral of someone that I had to, I had to show prime respect to, so I did not want to miss this meeting, but I, I was absent for that reason, so thank you, Chairman.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of June 21st of Fire District.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Abstain.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
New business, item B, authorize the publication of the maximum property tax levy to fund the 2024 Fire District 1 budget. Provide notice of intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate and establish public budget hearings on August 2nd, 2023 and August 23rd, 2023.
Okay.
Good afternoon again, Commissioners, Lorian Showalter, Area Budget Director. This item is identical in purpose to the item you just approved for Sedgwick County. The publication sets the maximum budget for the Fire District at $27,735,225 and establishes a maximum property tax levy of $21,308,547 based on the intent of maintaining a rate of 17.889 mils. Like the county, this item will also publicize the intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate of 16.463 mils in the recommended budget. The first public hearing will be held Wednesday, August 2nd at 6:00 PM, and the final public hearing will be held on Wednesday, August 23rd at 9:00 AM. Budget adoption again is scheduled for August 23rd. I'll be happy to stand for any questions. If there are none, I recommend you authorize the publication.
Okay, is there any questions for Lorian on this? We could, we could wind the clock back about 10 minutes and have the same exact discussion, but I think we've, we've had that discussion. If there is none, I'll give opportunity, but I will go ahead and make the motion, being no discussion right now. So I move, we authorize a publication of a notice of public hearing and intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate regarding Fire District Number 1's 2024 budget. The publication shall include a total budget of $27,735,225 and an ad valorem property tax levy of $21,308,547, which is approximately equivalent to 17.889 mils based on the estimated assessed valuation and subject to technical adjustments. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman, just a quick question. What was the, what was the mil levy rate last year when we went past the budget for this?
We had 17.889, it ended up at 17.912.
So this is going back to 889?
Yes.
Thank you so much, appreciate that. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. I don't see any other questions, there's a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell. Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries, next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Yes.
Good afternoon again, Chairman and Commissioner, Tom Stoles, recommend approval of consent item C on the fire jet.
Okay, any questions on consent item C? I don't see anything, I make a motion that we approve consent item C. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Okay, since this is kind of our first time, next item, please.
Budget discussion.
Do we want to have a little budget discussion on the fire while, while it's open? While the Fire District's open, I'm getting a positive, and if anybody's got any budget discussion on fire, let's go ahead and, and discuss that, and then we'll adjourn and go back to the, to the regular meeting. Is any questions or discussion on fire? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I wanted to share, you guys have received some email from the managers, so I'm sure you're aware of this, but I have been trying to find a way to address something that I discovered. Last year, when we adopted the, the budget, we moved into a step pay plan for fire. And at that time, the strategy was to, to develop the step plan, first of all. If you're not familiar with what that is, it's, it's based on tenure and rank, and it starts out, so the very first starting wage for firefighter last year, we moved it up to $18 an hour. And that was a significant change, that needed to happen, I believe, for competitive pay reasons. But then every, there was 12 steps, and every step above that, we had a 3% increase. So it compounded, if you, if you go up one step, you give a 3% increase, you go up another step, 3% increase, and it's based on your tenure. So each year of service, you get another, another step movement, movement up. So after 12 years of service, theoretically, you'd be at step 12. And if you change rank, and you go from a firefighter to a lieutenant, for example, you move up a row, and so the row has a different set of numbers. To get into the step plan, what we did last year is we, we looked at that chart, and we placed people in the chart, making sure they didn't get a decrease in pay, but we basically plugged them in wherever we could on the proper row, but moved them up to the next pay number available to that firefighter. So some people got a small raise, some people got no raise, some people got a reasonable raise last year. And it wasn't, it was not a great plan, but at least got them into the step plan generally. And I, I believe this was important overall. It did a lot to bring up our, our junior firefighters, bring them up to at least $18 an hour. And I think we needed to do that for a couple of reasons, without going into lots, lots of detail. I think there's opportunities around us that had we not increased their pay. I think there's opportunities around us that had we not increased their pay, we would have lost a significant number of firefighters, and so I think this was necessary. Consequently, there is a result of that, is many of our firefighters are misplaced in that step chart. They are not being, they're not plugged in currently based on their tenure and their rank, and there's a significant number of firefighters that are in that chart incorrectly. So the question is what to do about that. The HR plan, as came to us initially, showed basically a one-step increase, which they deserve anyway, because they've been here another year. It would increase the entire pay table by two percent. So in other words, our starting salary last year was eighteen dollars an hour on a twenty-nine, twelve pay year, and it would increase that by two percent to eighteen thirty-six an hour. So a brand-new firefighter coming in in 2024 would be paid eighteen thirty-six an hour starting pay. If you were there a year, they would go up a step to the next step up. You'd have a two percent adjustment for the general pay adjustment, but also a three percent step raise, because you're moving up a step, if that makes any sense. Unfortunately, that plan, again, that plan was a good starting point, but what that plan did not address was the misplacements within that step plan. So I talked to some folks, especially Chief Nelson, and worked with him and found out that to fix this entirely would be probably more than we can afford. It's over two million dollar correction to the pay salary, but the question is, can we move in that direction quite a bit? So basically, if I divide that in half and say, what can we do this year? I think that's what I would like to see us do. So I have developed a plan that would do that, and again, it's based on tenure, based on rank, and it gets them, whatever their miss plug, if they're in the chart in the wrong position, it fixes it by fifty percent. And so to me, that's a reasonable way to begin to solve this. It doesn't solve it completely, but it does solve it significantly. And with that, that is what you had emailed to you. I call it the fifty percent plan. I'll use that word. It's not a total correction, but it's halfway where we need to go to fix it entirely. So there were some other plans that were discussed. I think there's problems with those other plans for numbers of reasons, and I know that HR is working on an evergreen comparable, that we do not have the data yet to know how that looks, but we will take a look at that when it's available, and I'm sure that we will all look at that very closely. So I just wanted to share all that and say that I do believe that the plan that I've developed, it does seem to be fiscally sound. I do believe that it's something that we can do. We have to be careful, but I don't think it's out of reach for the Commission to consider that plan this year potentially. So that's kind of what I want to share on that so far. See if there's any questions, because we don't get a chance to talk in open, puffed meetings. Now you know what I've been working on, and I'd be glad to take some questions or comments if you guys have any. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it, and I appreciate Commissioner Howe's interest in working a pay plan to correct errors that were created last year. What we happened last year was rather than listening to our HR experts and the Fire Chief, we went in, not we, I'd had nothing to do with it, but a plan was adopted with a lot of errors in it, and we need to fix those errors. I think this year, what we really need to do is what we didn't do last year is to listen to our HR experts and the Fire Chief and get their input before we jump in and adopt any plan whatsoever. I agree that it needs fixed. I think something like moving to where we're at in EMS and the Sheriff's Department with a fifteen-step plan would solve some of the issues that we have, so we need to address that, whether or not twelve-step or fifteen-step is the right thing. We need to make sure everybody's placed in the right position. We need to make sure it's affordable at the end, but what we don't need to do is to come up on Budget Day and have a plan that HR never vetted one time, that the police or the Fire Chief never vetted and adopted. So I hope we do this a lot more thought involved in the process as we move forward this year. So that's my only input. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Howe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to clarify a couple of points. Number one, I don't believe there were any errors in that chart. That was a concession that the Fire District employees made to get into a step plan chart. I described the process. It was done correctly, but it was a concession to get into the step pay plan. They knew they were not being plugged in correctly, and had we plugged them in correctly, it would have been millions of dollars more. So we, again, I think that the strategy was to adopt that step plan chart and increase the starting pay to eighteen dollars an hour. Those are two major elements of what we did last year, and we knew exactly what we did. And by the way, I brought this up a month before budget adoption. This is not something I surprise people with. Let me say that again. This was not a last-minute surprise. I gave it to Commissioners, in fact, if I remember correctly, I had surgery that morning. I came in, and we presented, I presented the plan. I'd had surgery that night, and in my recovery, I came in while I was on my pain medication, and I presented that budget once again, two weeks prior to budget adoption. And to the reasons why HR did not analyze that plan or Chief did not analyze that plan, I can't speak to them. I don't know why that happened, but the idea that I surprised my colleagues, that this was last minute, did this without thoughtful, without a thoughtful strategy is incorrect. I don't like that narrative. I think it's incorrect. Regards to fifteen steps versus twelve steps, if I understand correctly, we're talking three-step differences between the steps, and right now, I believe we have one firefighter that this would impact if we changed it from twelve to fifteen. If we adopt what I've presented, it doesn't really change the forecast other than for one employee. We can go to fifteen, but I would like to see the Steering Commission have some weigh-in on that. Also, I'd like to find out what Wichita does. I asked the Chief today to find out what Wichita does. I haven't got an answer back yet, so I'd like to look at some comparables. What does Derby do? Is it twelve steps? Is it fifteen steps? Let me explain what that means. If you are, if you don't change rank, so you come in as a firefighter and you work as a firefighter, you can hit the top of your pay progression and not get any more, because you've hit the top. You've hit step twelve. There's no step thirteen. So if we increase that to fifteen steps, that particular firefighter, we get a nine percent pay raise, but everybody else would still be where they are in what's been presented, because the number of firefighters would be at step ten, maybe at step eleven, but nobody would be at step twelve other than the one firefighter. So this is a discussion we can have once the Steering Commission is up and going. So if you want to change it now, that's fine, but it doesn't change anything significantly in the pay plan that's been presented. So anyway, to the argument that this was a mess, or there were errors, or that it was last minute, I would like to provide, I guess, my narrative, which is much different than that. So with all due respect, my colleagues, you might have a different opinion. That's totally fine, but I would like to present it as though this was very thoughtful. It was presented ahead of time, and it was necessary to save the Fire District. Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. Well, I would just like to agree with Commissioner Dennis. I mean, we have a process in place and how we go about this, and there should be a professionalized way, which we have, and we should be able to follow that through budget. I mean, we're very open and transparent with what we're doing, and I appreciate all the work, just the overwhelming amount of work that goes into this, and so thank you for everything that you guys are doing. I think when we look at fire in particular, we're kind of allowing them to, we treat them kind of like a quasi-union, but they're not a union anymore, because we've taken that right away in the past. And so I think as we're having these discussions and we want to continue to do that, then we should bring up the discussion again on formalizing their union and allowing them to have the ability to negotiate their pay benefits and policies, just like they had in the past. And so I think there's a way that we can do that. I don't think that, I think we should continue and have a conversation about this very publicly, but there needs to be a professional way and a process to get, to allow them to do what they're doing now anyway, because not allowing that just makes things happen like what happened last year, and now it's going to take over two million dollars to fix it, which is not fiscally responsible, in my opinion, to our budget, to the Fire District's budget, and I think that we just ought to do better. So I think the conversation around allowing them to have their rights back as a union is warranted at this point, and I would love to continue that at some point, but if we could get maybe some more data on what that would take and kind of the steps and really what changes, what those changes would be.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Beatty.
Chairman, I appreciate all the comments around the Fire District, and I think this is a consequential six weeks for our Fire District in a lot of ways. I wasn't here a year ago, but I watched every conversation and talked to many, many members of the Fire Department, and I really believe that we're walking into a really important six weeks here for a lot of reasons. And I also think it's important that the public understands that this is, we lack the margin of error and the margin of flexibility in the Fire District that we do in our other departments, because it's its own separate taxing jurisdiction. We can't borrow from the General Fund. We can't do some, we can't maneuver some things with flexibility like we can in the General Fund, in the Fire District. It's complicated, but it's incredibly important, because stability is incredibly important. I live in the Fire District. I pay the seventeen point eight eight nine mils of property tax in the Fire District. It's incredibly important to me and incredibly important to all the residents who live in the Fire District. So I'm engaged in these conversations. I think this is a consequential six weeks. I think it's important that our people in our Fire Department know that these conversations are happening right now, and I entertain the conversation about the union and recognizing. I think these are important conversations that have to be on the table, so we all have honest deliberative discussions of what we want our Fire District to look like. And this Steering Committee that's coming is a valuable opportunity as well, so that we can get information from people that are outside of our purview and outside of scope. So I just say all of that by saying this next six weeks for the entire budget, but particularly for our Fire District, I think is going to be incredibly important, but I see it as an opportunity more so than anything. So I'm excited about these conversations.
And we can continue this conversation, and we should, if you want to. I'm just saying that be mindful that there is a WAMPO meeting in twenty-one minutes, and so we kind of, and if we wanted to have some other, there's a lot of departments, I don't know how much other general budget discussion we want to have on our general meeting, so it's just a reminder, so we can continue on as this goes, and know that there's some, a couple of us probably have to have a hard stop at three o'clock about. They have to have a quorum. They have to, they need a quorum. Okay. So anyway, go ahead, Commissioner Howe.
I just wanted to make a final point, I think, before we move on, but the org chart is important to me, because Chief Doug Williams does report directly to the BOCC. As much as I just appreciate the idea of working through HR and manager and Lindsay and legal and everything else, that's important, but he has a right to talk to the BOCC, and I have a right to listen to him. I have a right to talk to him as well. And I think when the pay plan is insufficient, last year, that pay plan, I think, would have destroyed the Fire District. I honestly do. We would not have a Fire District today had we done what was initially presented. We saved the Fire District with that action last year. I'm so grateful that we were able to do that. But when I'm speaking up, and I'm actually making very great arguments, and there's a cold response, I continue on. If there's not a majority vote at some point to approve what I come up with, that's fine. Thankfully, last year, there was a majority vote, and it passed. But I did everything correctly. This idea that I'm doing this in a sinister way, behind the scenes, in a secretive way, and doing things around people is just not true. I followed the process. I included all the right people, and I'm sorry that things weren't as people wanted them on a budget adoption day, but at the end of the day, we saved the Fire District, and I will continue to work with Chief Williams. He is our employee, and he has a right to talk to us directly. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? I don't see any, so we will close the budget discussion. Next item, please. Is there any on fire? No. Okay, so we will, unless there's any other matters to come for the Fire District, we will adjourn the Fire District and return to the General Board of County Commission meeting. Next item, please.
Budget discussion.
Okay, budget discussion. Do we have any budget discussion? It was pretty extensive, receive and file, Tom, and a lot of work, Lorian, staff, including Lindsay. And I just want to make a comment, my one comment is the work that HR has done over the last couple of years, I just can't, reclassifying and all of the stuff that you all did in basically all forty departments, not just one. We've just had extensive conversation about one department of employees, but we have twenty-five hundred or so, and apparently long overdue for the reclassification and adjustments and inflation, and I know I should be thanking every department, but I really want to point out that HR, what they've done the last year at least, if not two years, has been commendable, and it's helped us be in a competitive game to provide services to the community, which is what we're supposed to do. So that's my general rah-rah comment, but it's open for anything else on the budget discussion at this time. So, yes, Commissioner Howe.
Thank you. Sounds like we need to spend some more time to talk about the budgets. Our next meeting to talk about the budgets is in two weeks, is that correct? It's next week, next week. Okay, then we have a break, though. We have a, so we have a two-week period after that. Okay, thank you. I don't know how you want to do this, but looking at some of the decision packages that have ended up in the budget book, I just want to, I assume the fact that they're in here, Tom, that you've heard from at least three Commissioners that agree that these things should be in here, so I'll just register my thoughts. Again, I don't know that we need to spend a hundred thousand dollars on a website redesign. I would probably want to see that taken out. I'm pretty happy with our website. Is it perfect? No. I don't know that it's ever going to attract people to the website. It does its job. It provides information. It's easy to navigate, at least it is for me. I think the website does its job. I don't know that we need to necessarily spend a hundred thousand dollars on that personally. I don't know if you have any, want to go have comments on that or not, but I have some questions regarding the Election Commissioner and the Central Services. Together, there's two items together that add up to a hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars. This is for, has the same description. The description is funding for advanced mail flyers. Can you please explain what that is? Anybody?
Commissioner, go ahead, or is Election Commissioner got going? Okay.
Commissioners, Lindsay Porsso, your CFO. So if you recall, through our conversations, we had a staff meeting discussion where there were two tracks that we could take, that we were contemplating, including in the recommended budget. One was to do a postcard reminder and to allow folks to request an advance by mail ballot that way, and we would add thirty additional polling sites. Then the alternative option is what is included here, and that is to add fifteen polling sites, but to actually do the advanced mail ballot application by mail. And so that is what was funded through this recommended budget, and if you recall, that was Election Commissioner Rainwater's preference was that latter option. So that is what was funded here.
Well, it is interesting that to add fifteen sites is significantly cheaper than the postcard. I guess I would wonder if we did thirty sites, do we need that postcard? I guess I would wonder if we did 30 sites, do we need that postcard?
So the, the postcards were, are not included in here. It is only the advanced by-mail ballot application itself with 15 poll sites. And then we were going to do, if it was a postcard, we would have added 30 additional polling sites.
Okay, so I mean, I mean, maybe I misunderstood, then you're telling me this advanced by-mail flyer is, is in fact an app, a ballot application?
Yes.
Okay.
And so the option with the flyer plus 15 sites, that's where we had, the flyer estimate was 120,000 to do the application. The postcard was 106,000. So you're right, there wasn't a lot of cost difference, but that postcard is not what was included here. That was an alternative option, in which case we also would have added additional polling sites.
So I, I asked a question when that was presented before about the difference in the, the, what was being mailed. One of them is a letter that's a sealed envelope, but they printed eight and a half by 11 sheet of paper inside that's got detailed information on it about the specific voter, and it's addressed to the specific voter. The postcard is addressed to the voter, but it's, it's not inside of an envelope, it's just a flat piece of paper. It's also smaller. It gets a postal, it gets a card rate. Why, why are these so close together in cost when they're significantly different in what we're sending out?
I, I know that Christian in the Election Office was able to go through and actually look at the specific invoices from both examples and, or from both types of mailers in the past. This is what the costs came down to, and we included increases for postage and the same number of mailers. So I do see that Rick Riggs is our expert here. He has moved up closer to the podium, so I'm going to take it that he is willing to be a sacrificial lamb and maybe come and talk to a little more details on this, if that's okay.
Thank you, Rick Riggs, Deputy Election Commissioner. The advanced by-mail flyer, it's actually a folded self-mailer, so it, it, the original size before it's folded is eight and a half by 17. It's folded, it's tri-folded down and then mailed. Included in that is an application. So the application that goes out is not a piece of paper in an envelope.
Okay.
Both the postcard, and we're calling it a postcard, but it's eight and a half by five and a half. It's not postcard size. Both that postcard and the flyer are sent at the same postage rate. It is standard rate, pre-sorted mail, which is cheaper than postcard postage. So the savings in postage is only in that the flyer is sent to every registered voter, the postcard would be sent to every household that has a registered voter. So there is a small amount of savings because we're sending less, but not significantly less.
Okay.
The postcard is also full color, whereas the other is not full color. At least the postcard that we sent last year was full color.
Okay, and I guess I just challenge, in time to cutting budgets, I'd like to know why it's full color. I don't need an answer right now, but it seems like that may, that'd be an easy thing to change to reduce costs a little bit. Okay. All right. I know time's ticking by here, and people are getting the NC, so I'll probably stop. I have lots more questions. I will get to them later, I guess. Maybe next week. Thank you.
Okay. Does any other Commissioners have something that is worth, important for now? I don't see any, so, okay.